We've got to repeat the bang.
We've got to get the bang. Tell me when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight we have, Matt Gambino is with us via computer because he is at a business meeting in Phoenix. So, we are all here. Our first agenda item is approval of the minutes from April 4th. Did everybody have a chance to read those? Yes? Do we have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Kelly, you also, it did make the agenda about the March, the March 10th?
Yes. Yes, that's right. They were in the folder.
Yep.
Did everybody read the March 10th?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Here were the meeting minutes from our three town meeting.
From the morning of the town meeting, right. Can we get a motion to approve March 10th?
Also moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have public comment. I don't know if anybody from the public wants to Moving right along. Reports for the school committee. Superintendent?
Yeah, so I just have a few, two, three things briefly and then I'm actually going to turn it over to our guests from the, that's okay. So, just a quick personal update. Tim Donovan, who will be here later, he's not here already, is in the process of hiring for high school assistant principal and it's a vacancy caused by the fact that Sarah McHire is going to go to the middle school to serve as principal. He's doing a great job of the process, engaging parents, students, faculty and staff, has wrote some forms. And just generally speaking, I just wanted to let you know, he expects to finalize the process of the decision probably by the end of May. I just kind of want to let you know that's ongoing. Something completely unrelated, I sent this to you by email a couple weeks ago, but Tom Holgate and I had met recently with the fire chief, Chief Neward, about a program that, it's a program called Stop the Bleed. It's what it sounds like. It's a, it's a program that trains participants on stop, stopping bleeding for severe wounds. And after speaking with him, we, we are going to try to incorporate, we are going to incorporate into our ninth and 10th grade health curriculum. It aligns really nicely with the curriculum and we're very happy to learn more about it and hear the chief out and we're gladly to accept their offer to provide the instruction. So, I just think it's kind of a nice piece of evidence of community partnership and working together with other municipal departments. So, we really appreciate, we really appreciate the chief's, the chief's offer to do that. And then, again unrelated, but I just wanted to share with you, this year we have two students in what's called the ICE program at Pejota State University. ICE stands for Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Initiative. And it's a program that, I'm going to describe it here, it's a fully inclusive post-secondary program for young adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This is from the description. Students in the ICE program share the same experiences as their college-age peers in areas of academics, socialization, career development, independent living. There's a lot of support someplace, but with those supports, our ICE students enroll in courses, they take part in campus internships, they socialize with peers. And as part of their experience, this is the first year we've had students there, at the end of the year, we're asking our students, or students who are required, I guess, to present, kind of to a panel, if you will, about their experiences, their progress on their goals, their successes, their challenges. It kind of, it feels a little bit like a team meeting, actually. And Terry Rbetsky and I, as well as a couple of our teachers and some administrators, will be attending them. And I bring it up tonight because yesterday, we had our first one and I just have to say, I wouldn't do it justice, but it was incredibly inspiring to watch this particular student transition into post-secondary life and into college life is really amazing. The culmination of lots of years of progress here at Duxbury and so our ability to send them to do great, greater things beyond us is really special. So, we'll be going back to the second one next week and there's a big end-of-year event, I believe, on May 18th that we're going to participate in too. So, it's, it's just awesome. At some point I could share more about it with you, but it just happened yesterday, so I figured I'd share it with you.
Okay.
That's that. And, under superintendent's report, I, you want to talk about DTF or do you want to, do you want me to just introduce?
However you want to do it.
So, I'm going to introduce Katie Kane, who, president, is that your title?
Yeah.
Of the Duxbury Education Foundation. And I'm still going to turn it over to her, but she's here tonight to officially present the grants that they funded this year. And I won't steal her thunder. It's amazing and impressive. But so Katie, why don't you, you can join us, you can bring anybody up here.
Good evening. My name is Katie Kane and I'm president of the Duxbury Education Foundation. Since 1989, we have funded close to $2 million in grants. And we are always looking for teachers who are looking for innovative programs that benefit the students, the teachers and staff of the Duxbury Public Schools. We work throughout the year to raise funds through different events that would not be successful without the continued support of this community. This year, we're pleased to be funding 11 grants across four schools. I'm going to pass, going to pass those around. It's a list of our grants. The grants that we're funding this year, we are paying for a yoga certification for a middle school teacher. That kind of piggybacks off the COM Classroom Initiative that we funded last year. We are also funding a grant entitled the Alden Read Aloud, which we are purchasing a set of books for each grade level at Alden School for teachers to use as an interactive read aloud during the 2018-2019 school year. So, allow each grade level to have the same shared reading experience and to really connect through that literature. We are also purchasing some costumes and props, as well as two green screens for the eighth grade English, their video and audio presentations for their drama and poetry unit. We're also going to be investing in a modified one-year pilot program for keyboarding at Alden School. It will be to teach kids in grades three through five digital literacy and keyboarding skills. It's more interactive and instructional-based. We will also be funding six Chromebooks for Ms. McDonald's ESL students with the goal of improving writing and technology skills. We are going to be purchasing some raised garden beds for community garden to be installed at the Duxbury Middle School. We are also purchasing some classroom tools to be used with the COM Classroom Initiative at Chandler School, such as wobble and ball chairs, desk fidgets, beanbag chairs, standing desks. These will be used throughout different classrooms at Chandler School. We are going to be purchasing a virtual reality teaching tool for a social studies classroom in the middle school. There will be 10 student kits that we're purchasing in hope for some center time in that social studies classroom where there could be students using those virtual reality tools while other students might be working on something else. Last year, we purchased some virtual reality teaching tools for high school social studies classroom. That's been very successful. So, other teachers want in on that. This is exciting for us. We're going to purchase a horizontal climbing wall in the Alden Gymnasium. The teachers have already received professional development training for this, so they're excited to now have this here at Alden School. Personal food computers, this is a concept that actually came out of MIT. Students and professors there had built what they call personal food computers that are designed to grow a variety of food in a controlled environment. These personal food computers are going to be built and used in a variety of biology classes at the high school. These teachers will also be bringing someone from MIT down this summer to help with the construction of these. And then lastly, we are funding a guided reading library at Chandler School. It will be managed by the reading specialist at Chandler, but will be accessible to all Chandler teachers to support their new balanced literacy curriculum initiative next year. So, we are excited to present a check to Dr. Antonucci to the Duxbury Public Schools in the amount of $51,276.
Great.
Can we take a picture?
Come on.
Can we take a, take a picture?
Yes, that would be great.
Yes.
Do you want to call this?
Yes.
Look at me for a minute.
All right, ready?
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, thank you.
Great chat.
Katie, before you leave, I just want to say that it has been my first year here, but it's just been a pleasure of working with the, the process is really thorough and thoughtful and Tim and I did, I don't even want to say it, a lot of work with them, but some work with them and it was, it was a pleasure from top to bottom and the result was amazing. And so, we have all the students and staff, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Should we call the head up in the picture?
I know. He was smiling, isn't he?
No.
So, you, is that all you have, John?
Yeah.
Okay. Tim?
Thank you very much. Just earlier this evening, I put in the, in your folder online this, this summary. So, I may not address everything based on time because I could go on for a while. But let me start by just saying that as a follow-up to the digital literacy review that was recently conducted, the district's, the district's curriculum committee is meeting next week. And the major topic on the agenda will be to explore the district's current technology standards, to review the 2016 Massachusetts State Technology Frameworks, and to look at the ISTI, the International Society of Technology and Education Standards. And discussion will ensue about Duxbury's next best steps as it relates to technology curriculum, development, and the placement of the various standards. On a side note, I'm pleased to say that Dr. Klingerman will be joining us at that meeting. So, she's going to come for a couple of subject supervisor meetings, the curriculum review meeting, and we've scheduled a couple of days together during the month of May. So, that'll be very exciting. I'm also pleased to report that we're sending a team of four Duxbury educators to an SEL conference, which will be hosted by the Lexington Public Schools. The composition of the Duxbury team is one elementary assistant principal, one elementary counselor, one subject supervisor, and our director of technology, who is really attending in place of our guidance director. Because Mrs. Dembowski, grade six through 12, would kind of be the lead for SEL initiatives in middle and high school. But, a few of the stated objectives of the conference include to learn best practices and practical solutions for developing a comprehensive SEL plan for the district, and to connect with others in our region and to share lessons learned, to explore strategies for successfully advocating for SEL in our school, our district, and our community. I'm not going to read all of what I wrote about summer curriculum work, but we have nine different projects that will be operating during the course of the summer months with teachers working on summer curriculum. And I did give you some examples in, in your Google folder. For a few months now, administration has been debating the pros and cons of summer work packets at the middle school and high school level. It has been a spirited debate, yet the overwhelming sentiment is to eliminate middle and high school math packets, as well as middle school ELA packets. Summer reading will remain at both the middle and high school level, but there will be no beginning-of-the-year assessments associated with the summer reading and no packet of comprehension questions. Some of the reasoning behind this discussion and this decision include more efficient and actively engaged time at the beginning of the school year, rather than evaluating students on summer work, or pre-assessing skills that were assessed at the end of the previous school year. On a very quick side note, I, I personally was incredibly surprised in the first two weeks of school here in Duxbury this year, that we were assessing god knows what. Some of it just being pre-skills, some of it being summer work, but we were assessing right up until the end of the second week and school hadn't start, really started yet for a lot of kids. So, one of the goals of eliminating the summer packets is to eliminate some of that early beginning-of-the-year assessment. Also, there's a lack of timely feedback and support as it relates to mathematical problem solving. If I'm working on a summer packet and I'm going down the wrong road, I won't know I'm down the wrong road unless somebody gives me feedback. And who's that going to be? My family may engage a tutor, my family may help me, but if I'm not in that circumstance and I don't have that, that luxury. And I could have, I could go all summer doing mathematics wrong, I won't know until fall. There is a questionable valuable, a questionable value. If students do all of the work during the first few days of vacation and then go two full months without looking at their work, or vice versa, doing it just two days prior to the opening of school. We have no control over the distribution of the time spent on this work, and the purpose of the work is really defeated by those who front-load or those who wait until the very end to do the work. Skill regression is not addressed by quick spurts of activity followed by long drought. We actually don't provide modified and or personalized work packets to meet the diverse needs of our student body. It has generally been a one-size-fits-all approach. If we are not modifying the work for students who have IUPs that demand modified work, then we're not in compliance with federal law. So, that in and of itself should be a reason to eliminate summer packets. Quite simply, it's a stressor on both students and families that we can do without. Two quick caveats. The math department will produce practice work packets for any student or family who wants summer work. It'll simply be on their own for them to pursue and explore. The work won't be graded, normal students be assessed on at the beginning of the school year. The elimination of summer work packets does not apply for the work associated with membership in any advanced placement course. That's a whole separate curriculum that is just different. Before making any final decisions, this topic was discussed among departments, in particular the language arts and math departments at both the middle school and the high school. I attended a, a meeting of the math department, middle school and high school math teachers. About six showed up. It was a voluntary meeting. I think the subject supervisor was geared up for a fight. I laid out the foundation that we're just talking about now, and the response was, well, why didn't we do this 10 years ago? There was no pushback whatsoever on behalf of staff, with the staff who were at that meeting, nor have we heard any since then. So, I'm hopeful that that's a good announcement for a lot of our families, a lot of our kids. We can make better use of our school time, both at the end of the year and at the beginning of the year, without doing all kinds of pre-assessing and post-assessing and worrying about summer packets that we have no control over. Finally, the district administrators and subject supervisors this week sent their staff an educator feedback survey. This is part of the educator evaluation system. It's an expectation for all administrators to give the people that they evaluate an opportunity to provide them feedback. Our administrators are doing it as a model. They did it last year. They're doing it again this year. During the course of this year, I've been involved in negotiations with the DTA on what would that look like for students to provide feedback to their teachers. So, at a future, hopefully before I leave in June, at a future meeting, I'll, I'll present you information about what the student surveys will look like of their teachers at all grade levels. Clearly, a first grade survey of their teacher looks different than a 12th grade survey of their teacher. And that will be administered beginning next school year for all, all teaching staff. Again, it was done last year, but it was a 65-question survey that administrators gave teachers. It was way too long. And I think it was administered, administered a little too late in the year when people's thoughts were already on to other things. So, hopefully by sending it out in early May, we're also providing time at department meetings, grade level meetings, and building staff meetings for teachers to open their computers and complete their surveys, because we're looking for 100% feedback. So, there is a book called Feedback is a Gift. When I was given it, I didn't really believe it was true.
Right.
But, I'm hopeful that this turns out to be a good process. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as a mom with two kids left in the school system, I couldn't be more happy to get rid of the summer work. Because I think a lot of, you know, all the research that I have seen shows that it doesn't help for all the reasons that you said. And most of our students get enrichment in the summer in different ways. They're at camps or camp invention or doing other things. So, I'm thrilled. And I just make my kids read books all summer. They should do book reports.
Tim mentioned it was spirited. I would tell you, a lot of that spirit came from me.
[laughing]
And this, this is, and I've talked about this before, but this whole, we talk about social emotional learning all the time. We literally, we have to start walking the walk, you know, instead of just talking about it. And this is just, it's a small thing, but I think it's a really important thing. Kids need, kids need a break.
Yeah.
As to adults, you know, and so, especially as Tim and I know, we didn't really see the value, you know, sometimes it costs benefit, but it's time to seem to, I thought it was kind of a no-brainer, but we'll see what, see what happens.
Great.
Super.
All right. Mr. Prul, onto business.
Onto business. All right, we have tonight a third quarter financial report on the operating budget. At this point, in the first year, fiscal year, we have analyzed and projected the salaries of our staff for quarter three. And most base salaries lines are positive. We will maintain reviewing these accounts throughout the fiscal year. Other salary areas to monitor are substitute accounts, co-curricular and coaches' salaries. Three out of the five substitute lines are projected to be over their budget. This is due to the first few months, we did not have full-time help and needed substitute coverage. The other substitute lines will be able to cover the overage at this point. Co-curricular and coaches' salaries are positive at this point. Our year-to-date review of special education out of district costs shows that we are within our budget. We will monitor the SED costs on a monthly basis. We have a few weeks of cold, challenging weather. It doesn't seem like it today, but we did have them, that will expand, expand more of the utility budget. At this point, we feel utilities projections are within the budget. Vocational tuition and transportation should be monitored. We have four students going to South Shore Vocational School and two students going to Norfolk County Agricultural School. Not all the students were budgeted, but at this point, we covered that cost so far. And transportation budget is made up of regular transportation, the yellow buses, special education transportation, and homeless transportation. All three transportation lines are positive with both special ed and homeless running with a small surplus. But this could change, but at this point, we look pretty good. We're going to wait for about another week or so until another payroll goes through, and then we'll do another, probably a final financial analysis of the rest of the year. But right now, we look pretty solid.
What do you mean by at the beginning of the year, we didn't have enough full-time coverage that we went over? People were out, so we used more subs?
People, yeah. People were out, so we had to get a substitute to come in and work their job until we hired someone full-time.
Okay.
David, we've seen this breakdown previously, but what, what's the average vocational school district, per student cost?
It's for South Shore, it's around $16,800. For Norfolk Aggie, it's about, I think, 20.
But all-in?
Less transportation.
I was going to say all-in. Weren't the numbers closer to 30 all-in with transportation per student?
For the full budget between vocational tuition and vocational transportation is about $170,000 for six students.
Six students, $172,000, so it's just shy of 30,000.
Okay. So, you know, this is, this is again, one of these areas where there's, I think, increasing demand. The quality of the vocational schools are outstanding. There's a lot of interest in vocational education for a lot of good reasons. But, it's a budget buster for us if every incremental student is 15,000 to 20,000 dollars that is unfunded in our, you know, in our normal budget. It's just something we need to be really mindful of because we're in the uncomfortable position of not promoting a path that might be best for a significant number of our students. So anyhow, so you had mentioned it previously, but I think we just need to be aware that there should be more of our students availing themselves of vocational education, but there's a consequence of that.
It was also unusual, and I don't want to get in this conversation, we've had it before, it's very unusual for us to have to carry the vocational tuitions in the school department operating budget.
Right.
Really, in most towns, I've never heard of otherwise, the town carries it. All right, so they have an education budget, some goes to Duxbury Public Schools, some goes for vocational. So, why it's in our budget, I don't know the history there, but at some point it'd be nice to...
Great. Super.
Do we know at the end of this year if there are additional students opting to go for next year and not go to high school?
Well, so, they're still, they're still in flux, but we do, it looks like our numbers are chaotic today, right?
We have three students that have put paperwork in to go to vocational schools. Sometimes they get accepted and they go, sometimes they get accepted and they decide not to go.
I think we, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think we budgeted for seven students each year.
Okay.
So, we should...
So, nobody's graduating, nobody's rolling off?
Yeah, no, some will be. So, I think we're, I still, right now, I think we're lined up to be on budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Prul, your, your sentence here, "Our year-to-date review of SED out of district costs shows that we're within budget." Can we revisit that when we talk about the stabilization?
There's a caveat to that, yes.
Yes, because this doesn't sound like all the other stuff we've been talking about relating to special education. There is a, there's a budget issue there.
It's only on budget with the revenue assets that were built into the original assumptions.
Right, right.
We're talking about that.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Otherwise, it's a $400,000 budget.
Right.
That's the question.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to, or I knew.
Yeah, so I'm going to, we'll get to that.
All right, good. No student reps tonight, they must have spring fever.
I am Jessica Murray, Los Angeles City, and I'm going to be here tonight.
Come on up, Jess. Are you Emily's sister?
I am, yes.
Another Marie, I'm loving.
I just wanted to introduce myself.
I saw you back.
Thank you. I just wanted to say hi and introduce myself. And I'm very excited to be working on the school committee. And from what I've heard, everything sounds very good.
We're not scared. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
They, I, they told me that they were going to be here tonight, so I don't have anything to say, but they, I don't know where they are.
[laughing]
But thank you so much for having me.
So, what, what grade are you in?
I'm a sophomore.
A sophomore. How's it going so far?
Good, good, yeah. I love sophomore year.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's very fun.
You said you won't have summer work?
No, I cannot say I am. It's a nice relief of stress, though.
Yeah. Good.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
And you can stay, or?
I have a little homework to do.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, nice to meet you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I have a few things that I wanted to do for my report. I know the paper had an article about the seawall and the town maybe needing a prop two and a half for that, so I just didn't know how that might impact the schools, if you had any feedback on that.
The only, the only thing I'll, I know is that I might have this wrong, but I did ask the town administrator about it. And basically, it's a significant rebuild or repair. And I believe 75% of it is reimbursable by FEMA, but the deal is you have to spend the money first. And so, I believe they're moving towards needing to do a debt exclusion to raise that money to fix it and then ultimately get reimbursement. So, mechanics of that, I'm, you know, I'm not really privy to. So, that's all I know about it right now. So that's all I know about it right now. I do have to say, I think the seawall is a great metaphor for what's also happening at the school department. You know, like user erosion are at some point gonna lead to.
A breach.
A need, yeah, a breach and a need to master repair. I just find it really ironic when I, when I read those articles and, you know, we're bad at the resources here and erosion is a perfect word. So not to get, that is a huge editorial comment. Not to go any further on that editorial comment, but yeah, that's all I know about that at this point.
All right.
I was, I was sick at the last meeting. Did we talk about the budget last meeting or is it, is it, is it, have we kept up our string of talking about the budget in every meeting?
Yeah, pretty much.
Pretty much, we'll get to that, yeah.
Just wanted to see if I missed anything.
No, no.
It's kind of a never-ending. Two Duxbury teachers that I know of ran in the Boston Marathon. I know Pam Manley got a lot of coverage. And then Melanie Kennedy, who used to be Miss Hebert.
She had one also.
And who did, I thought there was a third.
Lori Aldrich, from Alden.
Bingo, Mrs. Aldrich. So to me, that's quite impressive because I don't run around the block. So it's very impressive, so I'm very proud of our Duxbury teachers. We had a reminder, I think from Peter, that our emails apply to open meeting law, which I think everybody knows, but it doesn't hurt to restate, no discussion on email. Since we don't have students here, I can say the, the ski teams had their ski banquet last week and I got to go and it was so much fun. My first banquet as a high school parent and the kids are so adorable and Kate McNulty was fetid. She's an amazing skier and she's also quite a rower and she's going to Cornell for rowing. So it was fun to see her off and, and attend a kid event. We have on our May sixteenth agenda, the superintendent evaluation. So I will get out forms to people.
Yeah, I, I, so we haven't talked about this, but I, I would hope it would be there in June, not May, if that's possible.
Okay.
But we could talk about that offline.
We can talk about that offline. Okay. So I have a couple of things in regards to the budget, but I'm, I'm gonna address, there was a letter in the Clipper today. And I thought, it was a letter to the editor, which is an opinion piece, but I, I feel like there are some misconceptions out there about us asking for people to throw money at the schools. And that's not what we're asking for. Of all the departments, the schools did not get level service funded this year. Did not get level service funded this year. We were short, so we're cutting. We weren't asking for extra, the budget, and I think my opinion, having served on school committee prior with a different superintendent is, we were given a number, it was accepted, and we made cuts. So now that Superintendent Antonucci has come in and we hired him for his expertise, he's made a completely transparent budget. And we can show every single penny that we're spending and prove that we're not asking for anything more. This is what we need and we're still not getting what we need. So I, I just wanna say that a couple of times it's, it's been written that if we throw, you know, and it had to do with the rankings and all that. It basically, you need to fund the schools. In my opinion, so I don't know if anybody read the letter or, no?
Not yet.
Okay. And then the other piece to that is, we'll get into the special ed stabilization fund. But I sent a letter to Rainey Reed and I haven't received a response, but I basically asked him about the SED stabilization fund, when it was instituted, when the first payment was, when the Board of Selectmen did that first vote, when we did our first vote. I'm trying to figure out, because we got some really bad coverage, that we were in a fight. And zero of five school committee members knew anything about that. So can't have a fight unless two people are fighting. So we were kind of confused about that and I'm glad the Clipper is here tonight because we are trying to find some answers and work things out with the town because we're all just trying to educate the students of Duxbury. Right? It's not us versus anybody. It's, this is a department of the town and we need to take care of the students in town. And then the only other thing I wanted to share with you is, I don't know if everybody gets the mask bulletin, Mass Association of School Committees, but I really was interested to read that the Board of Education opposes arming teachers. And I just wanted to read their statement because I think this is something really important in, in these times, especially in light of all the school shootings. Says, whereas the Mass Board of Elementary and Secondary Education was deeply troubled by the February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen shooting at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, that killed fourteen students and three adults, and equally troubled by previous school shootings, including the nineteen ninety-nine shooting at Columbine High in Colorado that killed twelve students and one adult, and the two thousand twelve shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Connecticut that killed twenty students and six adults. And whereas there is no evidence-based research showing that arming teachers would reduce casualties in mass shootings, and whereas allowing guns in school by other than law enforcement would increase the risk of accidental shootings of students and other bystanders. And whereas teachers are first and foremost educators and therefore should be employed solely on the basis of their educational skills and credentials, not their skills as a security officer. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education believes arming educators will make schools less safe and the board opposes any move to do so. And I agree. So thank you. So discussion items. Cheryl with the alternative structured learning day programs.
Could I, could I just interrupt?
Yes, absolutely.
We have the benefit of our chief of police here later. You know, I would love to hear your perspective, but I think, I would like us to think about how does the school committee feel about that and take a position because I, I think if the Mass Department of Education did and we have the benefit of hearing timely feedback and guidance from our law enforcement professionals, I, I think I'd love to take a position. So let's do that maybe at the end or at the next meeting, but I, I think we should do more than just say, we personally agree or, you know, we, we appreciate their taking a position. I think we should take a position. I think it's important enough, so. But we don't have to do it tonight, but let's come back to it perhaps.
Do you wanna say anything on it?
Well, they're gonna talk to us, I think.
After, yeah, but just about this, okay. Okay.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Cheryl, Cheryl, why don't you up? So it's really, this is really ironic that we're talking about this today, okay, but, because it's ninety degrees. But there, you might have heard in the news, this, this concept of blizzard bags. I don't love the name. But the state, amazingly, has become a lot more flexible. Schools trying to find alternatives to closing school or, or I should say, losing a day on the school calendar due to inclement, inclement weather. And so we, we had seven snow days this year, or inclement weather days. I would just say it's a lot of pressure. You're, you're trading, the only reason superintendents cancel school is because we need to make up the school on the back end, right? In most cases, you're, you're trading this, you're trading safety for convenience or safety for calendar. It's very, very complicated. So if there are alternatives, we decided that we'd love to pursue them. And the state recently has, has allowed some alternative. And so I kinda tasked Cheryl, or I think she volunteered kinda, I don't know.
I think I was the one that showed up with the memorandum.
So it was a sort of voluntold situation, hopefully, but Cheryl's done a lot of research on this. We just wanna share some of it with you tonight to see what you think about the idea. And if you kind of love the concept, we'll work more on it, but we didn't, we didn't, we couldn't really go any, any further without getting the school committee involved. So Cheryl, turn over your.
So for.
Do you need me to turn over the?
Do you all have the sheet that I handed you and there was a link to the memorandum? So, do you want me to put it up? Okay, sorry. Okay, so, in January, the DESE posted a memorandum very quietly on their website. And the tech directors got a hold of it and put it out on the listserv. And so basically, over the last few years, under their alternative day program, they have been accept, accepting days as an alternative program where students are out due to inclement weather. And there are, some parameters around what that will look like. There are many schools in Western Mass that are using blizzard bags frequently. And to make up the days particularly because they, they have high amount of snow days. So, so on January fifth, the memorandum came up. It never came out in the weekly DESE newsletter announcing that alternative structured learning day programs are possible solutions to scheduling issues posed by inclement weather to meet the state minimum student learning time requirements. And they have, they have standards that it must meet, so it must meet the standard for structured learning time, give staff sufficient time to plan and execute the plan, be substantial and accessible to all students, resemble the scope and depth of learning provided in the classroom, include appropriate oversight and teacher involvement, not resemble traditional homework assignments, that's key, have teachers and staff available to help and be approved by school committee. So the school committee and school leadership should determine the circumstances by which the program will be activated, how to clearly communicate the program specifics to all stakeholders. Many schools are using their website to get the, to get the information out. Set clear due dates and clearly articulate what completion means. And survey all stakeholders to gather feedback to evaluate success. And basically, if the student does the work, they get credit for assignment and that accounts, that would account as an attendance day for the child. And so we would be surveying the completion rates, how did it work for parents, how did it work for teachers, how did it work for students? And then go ahead and change the program, improve the program each time that we do it, so.
Cheryl, a couple of things.
Sure.
So the, the big picture, I think you all understand, is that you were, instead of making up the day on the back end, we would be giving students an assignment to complete, right?
Yes, yes.
Complete that assignment, that's an attendance day, and we don't have to make up the day on the back end. There's some parameters and, you know, kind of things that we need to wrestle with about that. I just wanna make the, the point, it's, I don't know if the right word is like asynchronous, but it doesn't have to be completed on that day. So if on February twenty-seventh, you know, it's a snow day, because power is an issue, access is a issue, it doesn't have to, so we just have to set, as Cheryl's note says, we just have to set a clear due date. It could be due, I don't know, it could be due a month later, right?
Month later, right.
So I just, I wanna make that point because that, that's really important, you know? We know that it would be challenging to complete work for, for all families on that, on that day. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we would like approval to take a look at running a pilot of this for next year. We haven't done a lot of the work in terms of what it would actually look like until we get approval. We would like to have the, the blizzard bags and we'll come up with another, another name for it because it's not always a blizzard for us. Lots of times it's a hurricane. But what it will, we would like our blizzard bags to focus on life skills and social emotional learning. So whether it's read a story and then talk about the, one of the characters and their, and their characteristic traits that are, that are good and reflect on it. And we've met with all the principals. The principals have all been involved in it as well in terms of coming up with assignments or, or suggesting sign, assignments. We thought, wouldn't it be nice at the high school level if students read about how to write a resume and drafted a resume for themselves and then share them and get feedback on all of those things? So we're looking to work on social emotional skills and life skills.
So it's an opportunity, right? It's like, it's nothing that really fit in. And given that, it's gotta be a little different than kind of normal homework, we said, let's focus on two of our major initiatives, those two. And, you know, take an opportunity maybe to squeeze something in, in a creative way.
And then how do we measure, how many, how do we measure completion and is that all part of the next year's pilot? As far as like, do X amount of students have to complete the work for it to be considered?
The state does not require an exact amount, but what they do ask is that you collect that data. The Western Massachusetts schools are getting an average of ninety percent completion rates. I shared a little bit of what the process would be like, what we need to go through to go ahead and set these up. I have, I have information from different schools on term, in terms of what they've done. And I've also given you sample blizzard bags. Some states in the Midwest actually have a blizzard bag that is, is prepared by the state, so they're state assignments. So this isn't just something new, it's something that a lot of states are using.
One of the big decisions if we were gonna, going to go down this path is when to, when, when does it trigger? Right? Do you start on the first day, do you wait until the three day, you know, whatever. We, we, we need to choose that or decide that, excuse me. So it's just something for you to be following over.
And maybe John and, and or Cheryl, could you comment on the principals if you wanted to? When you say a trial, are you thinking about comprehensive, but one day? Or are you thinking limited and one day? What's your sense of what a trial might look like?
Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, pilot, I mean, I, I think what we decide to do, well, it sort of depends on what I just said. So if we, if we say, okay, I'm making this up, but it's like, it doesn't, it doesn't get triggered until we have three, three, you know, school days. So if it was four, five, six, we would even next year have three.
For the whole K, K through twelve, we'd, we'd be ready with the.
Yes.
Faculty get overwhelmed by that prospect of doing that between now and then, or do you have a sense?
I mean, that's, it's all gonna be a two pilot.
Right.
Yeah.
The assignments will be by grade level and sometimes multiple grades. So we were brainstorming at the meeting, so I was hoping that they would come up and sit with me to share their thoughts.
Because I noticed, oh yeah, yeah, keep coming, sorry. I was just gonna say, I noticed on the examples, they were class specific, but if you, if you weren't class specific and you were more general, that's much easier to do.
We're gonna be more general.
So that, that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
We'd like to be more general.
Is, just trying, going back to what you were saying about summer work and not being differentiated for special education students, is that an issue in this?
And that's one of the reasons why we wouldn't have it do so right afterwards. And there is the potential of if there is power or people do have internet, that they can email and ask questions and we can respond back to those. So we, we can do some of that, but it's, depends upon the weather and whether there's internet and things like that. So it may be that we have some time during the school day or after school where we're going to need to provide support to those kids who need it.
Sure, okay. Yeah, because that would be one thing I'd be interested in hearing is, as you, as you begin to investigate, how you adapt this work for, for different abilities and how kids can cope out of, out of the school environment.
And we can personalize the assignments so that, and make assignments that people will work to their abilities on.
Sure.
Right out of, right out of the gate, so we can do some of that ahead of time.
Okay, great, great.
Is this, so, is this something that Karen is interested in allowing us to pursue?
Well, my question was, or my, my initial anxieties were allayed when you talked about having a completion date that's, you know, two or three weeks or a month later because the whole issue around power, losing power, not having connectivity, all those kind of practical issues could make this a stressor, the way summer work was a stressor.
Yes, definitely.
And, and, and I would hate for that to happen because when I was a child, I loved snow days. And I still want children to love snow days.
Yeah, we want to be the Grinch that cancels summer days, right?
Exactly, exactly. So, so I think this is a great, potentially a great solution to the scheduling problem and to having the school year extend day after day after day when we have bad weather. But, but I would. But, but I would still like to have snow days, you know, kind of, you know, have the children experience snow days in a traditional way.
That's, that's why I like the flexibility that it doesn't have to be the first time it snows, or the second time it snows, or the third time it snows, it can be the fifth time it hurricanes or snows or.
So why don't we think, do the recommendation a little more? And then maybe in a couple weeks just come back to it? Because it might be the, you know, I mean, the three days didn't come out of the air. There was actually part of an example that, yeah, which I keep referring to, but it might be something like that, right? You know?
Yeah.
A, there is some joy in the first couple and then it's a little tedious.
Yeah, well, and I would just like to add, one, you know, the days tacked on at the end of the school year aren't the most productive.
Yeah.
And second, it's an opportunity for us to innovate and give our, our leaders in the schools and our faculty an opportunity to innovate. And, you know, it sounds like it certainly would be a great thing to pilot and see how it goes. That's, you know, my impression. I mean, good for the state for giving us the, the luxury to innovate, let's take advantage of it and see if we can do it. And I love the concept of not just making it more of the same, taking the opportunity to do things that are a bit outside of our normal curriculum, I think is a great. So I'm very excited about it and it's.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we'll move forward, start and come up with a plan.
Thank you.
Bring it back at the end?
Great.
In June.
Yeah.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So next up is our vote to expend funds from the SPED stabilization fund.
Who would you like to start?
Who wants to start?
I believe Elka actually wants to. I think it's an actual action. So, in the FY 18 budget process, wasn't here, many of you were, the, there was a gap between what the town, well, there was a gap between the school department request and what the town wanted to fund. So the budget was out of balance and, and one of the ways that the budget got balanced, and please correct me if I'm wrong, one of the ways that the budget got balanced in FY 18 was to create a special education fund to $400,000 to fund unanticipated or, or unanticipated special ed tuition expenses, okay? Now, the interesting part of that though is that those expenses were identified at the time those students were in our district, tuition bills were coming due, so to speak. And so, even though it was called the SPED stabilization fund for the first year, I think it's pretty good understanding by all parties that the money for the first year, the 400 was going in and then the 400 was coming out. And the way the budget was built, the 400 was built in as a revenue offset. I mean, just like we build in grants, just like we build in user fee revolving funds, the 400 was built in. To kind of go back to what Julia said earlier, when we talked about the budget being balanced this year, if that $400,000 weren't transferred into the school department budget FY 18, we would be out of balance, overspent by $400,000. And again, well known, everybody understood, the mechanics and the process, you know, I think it's something that we're all, all working with. So what's on the agenda tonight is the second of what will be multiple votes by the school committee, ultimately by the board of selectmen. Because part of the agreement was that to officially expend the funds, you need a vote of the board, of the school committee and the board of selectmen. We brought, we brought forward one earlier, here's a second one, and then like I said, there'll be a third and maybe a fourth. What was I going to say about that? It got a little complicated, and Kayla, you alluded to the newspaper article, and Julia, I'm going to turn it over to you at some point, where we're all kind of muddling through the process. And when, when the bills came due that we needed to pay, this is back in January or so, the invoices actually got charged directly to the SPED stabilization. It's kind of like going, the analogy of you going, going to an ATM, right? You know, we know we needed to spend the money and we had two choices, charge it to the operating budget or charge it to the SPED stabilization. Again, the process is all new to us. It ultimately got charged to the SPED stabilization directly. There was no objection by the town, the town also approved that expenditure, the town cut the check, the town mailed the check to the, to the schools. At the most recent selectmen's meeting, it was questioned, why didn't quote unquote the money get spent before it was authorized? It's a technicality, it's a process issue, a process issue. We were effectively told that the vote was really a formality because the understanding that the 400 was, was a sweep in and out this year. So that's where we are. I'm going to turn it over to you guys to talk about it. But the vote tonight is to continue spending down the $400,000, which we need to balance the budget in FY 18.
But we have not cut a check for that.
This one, 75, no.
And we will not until the selectmen vote on it.
Right, right. Well, yes or no? So the, the process is, it's a little complicated, but what we're going to do in the future and even now is, we have to pay the bills, these are our kids, they're, you know, these kids have been in our system for several years minimum. We will charge it to the operating budget.
Yep.
And then when the votes get taken, there'll just be a journal entry from the SPED stabilization to, to the operating budget. It's a very, it's very much an accounting technicality. So again, we're muddling through the process this year, but it's a, it's a, it's a much bigger picture issue, the question about the use of the 400. To me it's, I don't know why we're still talking about it, we've talked about it ad nauseam during the budget process. So that's it for me, Rob. And you recommend you approve the 75 tonight, Rob?
Okay. I think it's worth separating, kind of separating in our minds that the process of paying the bills and drawing the money from the special education fund. And then the understandings that we have, there seems to be a different, difference in understandings between the school committee and the finance committee. So around the process, I, I think it's desirable to, to do what you're saying, which is to, to, I know the first time round, it kind of, it was the first time everybody was handling these payments, but it would be desirable to have the authorization before the money comes out of the, the reserve fund. So, so I'm hopeful that that can get, that when, when school committee signs the warrant that has those expenditures, that somehow that triggers a request for authorization from the selectmen and from our committee, so that everybody's party to it. And so that, that whole process issue I think is kind of straightforward and just needs to be ironed out. Would you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, John, the point that you made is the school, this was the first time the SPED stabilization fund was created by an act of the legislature a year ago. We created the fund last year, or March 2017 at our town meeting. This was the first deployment of the funds. And there was accounting staff who, which was portrayed as a school spending money without our authorization. I think it's important to clarify that town, the school can't spend the money without the town approving the expenditure. What failed to happen was the approval from both the school committee and the selectmen were not done in advance of checks being either approved or written or accounts being set up. We've rectified that, I believe, going forward. There was no nefarious attempt by the schools, we don't have the authority to spend the funds, the town has the authority to spend the funds. So we're trying to fix it. So my, not having been privy to, I wasn't at the selectmen's meeting, the portrayal was it that somehow this was the, the, the schools acting independently or unilaterally. It was, I think, an, you know, an inaccurate characterization of the mechanics, but it wasn't done the way it should have been done. So I think we need to fix the process, make sure we get the approvals in advance before there's any transfers. The town is our partners on, on this, right? We're not, we're not doing this unilaterally. So, so I think from that standpoint, it's important to say, we don't have the authority to unilaterally spend those funds. So the, the mechanism needs to be fixed and we need to improve it, but it wasn't something that we could have done on our own. Right? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. But there, there still is, the, the use of the $400,000 this year still is a fundamental issue. And again, we, is dead throughout the budget process. It's, it's in the budget, it needs to be spent this year, and so that even being questioned now is.
Can I just address that? Because Peter, you and I were involved in some of the discussions around the fiscal year 2018 budget. And it seemed that everybody was on the same page at town meeting 2017 when the fund was established. That, that, as you described just a minute ago, the, there was a, an increase in out of district tuition that was expected and it was funded with the establishment of the special education stabilization fund with $400,000 in free cash. Now, since town meeting 2007, there's emerged this different perspective about whether that was appropriate for it to be funded with free cash and then how we can, when the funds can be accessed. And going back, so, sometimes I do have memory problems, so I thought, well, I'll just try and refresh my memory. So I went back to the school, school committee videos and minutes, and it's pretty consistent throughout that whole period. In the run up to town meeting 2017 and through the past year, school, school committee and the superintendent's understanding about the fiscal year 2018 budget was pretty clear and consistent. What seems to have changed is the understandings of the finance committee. So I went to the finance committee's minutes and tried to see what their discussion had been. And so in the run up to the town meeting in 2017, when the special education reserve fund was established, looking through their minutes, there are three mentions of this new fund. The first one is in November, at the end of November, that the school committee or the, the school department is going to set up or establish the fund. But then in January, there's some discussion on the 12th of January about a stabilization fund of $400,000. Is, and, and I'll read it to you because it makes it absolutely clear what you were saying. It says, Dr. Bantantillo, Superintendent of Schools, presented the school budget. There was a gap of some $1,569,000. Originally, $800,000 was set aside. A stabilization fund of $400,000 is being set up for unexpected special education needs, leaving a gap of $369,000. The gap will be closed by using some other funds, the latest of which may be from the cable revenue charged to taxpayers' cable bills. So it's clear that in the negotiations, there was a gap that, that the school was asking for an increase of $1.569 million. The town was offering $800,000. It added $400,000 on top of that, and there was a gap of $369,000, which then was kind of negotiated and massaged, so that it all kind of was agreeable by the time, by town meeting when, when we all voted for the operating budget. And then later on in January, on the 24th, there's another mention of the SPED stabilization account being established at the special town meeting for $400,000, which will only be used for special need tuition. So it seems that we're following the understandings that are here in the public record. So, so this discussion over using the funds in fiscal year 2018, it was well understood when the fund was established that it was going to be used, major portion of it, to balance our budget. And it's in the record here. So either the different understanding that's emerged lately is not correct, or the public record is not correct, but you kind of can't have both. So, I think there's further discussion.
Question I have, do you have any indication from discussions with the town manager and the finance director that the selectmen are not supportive of dispensing the funds throughout the balance of the year? Because there were two issues. There was a process issue, which created us a, a, a sense of funds were dispersed without the proper approvals. Then there's a second, which is, do you expect the selectmen to vote if we vote tonight? They approved the last vote, if we vote tonight for an additional 71,000, do you have any expectation the selectmen will not support that?
So I, I wish I could say I knew, but I was in the town administrator's office at 5:00 PM the night before the selectmen's meeting. The process issue was never mentioned. I read about it in the paper on Wednesday. So it was, again, the town approved it, they got the check, you know, no objection. The process issue, I don't know. But as far as his understanding of needing the $400,000 to balance the budget, he is clear and fully understands the mechanics of it.
Okay, so what I would just recommend, because I think that's, you know, that's great that we've documented our understanding. Now we fixed the process, I think we should go forward, make the motion, go forward with the expectation we will spend the $400,000 between now and the end of this fiscal year. So I think that's, you know, and again, unless the selectmen raise an objection, then I think that's going to require much more substantial discussion. But I would operate on the assumption that the money's there, we put additional money in the SPED stabilization to help us next year. This money was anticipated to be spent this year, we're spending it as anticipated unless something else has changed, we should just go forward on the assumption the selectmen will support the transfer of the funds.
I want to add too, so right now, it's a misnamed right now, right, the SPED stabilization, because it's an in and out for FY 18. It's also an in and out amount for FY 19. If you remember during our budget process, they were, I believe the amount is 131,930, I don't, I don't, I think that's the exact amount, I don't know why I have that committed to my memory. It's maybe a PTSD thing or something about the budget process. But that money, I, I said this on town meeting floor, that money again this year for fiscal year 19 budget was a budget balancing amount, right? So long-term, hopefully in FY 20, any money in the SPED stabilization actually acts as a stabilization. And if we have money, we have need during a fiscal year, we can tap into it right now, the 400, and next year, the 131,930, it's a budget balancing tool. We had that conversation extensively with the town administrator, fully understands it, and we went on thinking that it was, it was going to be fine. So I just want to, I want to state that for the record.
Mm-hmm. It was Matt.
Did the, I don't know if I, I'm going to start this part. I'll get him back.
Oh, there he is.
Hi Matt, we thought we lost you.
So there's one other thing too, is that, again, I read about this in the newspaper, but there was a question about do we use, why, why wouldn't we use circuit breaker funds first? And it's a little, you know, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here, maybe we can show it at the next meeting, but in FY 18 and FY 19, again, we build in a certain amount of circuit breaker reimbursement as a revenue offset, and we build in the SPED stabilization as a revenue offset, and a whole bunch of other things, right? Our budget next year is part of the budget negotiation this year, we contributed an additional $150,000 in circuit breaker. We need $100,000 next year on the circuit breaker. The proper way to, to use that money is to do it a year in arrears, right? Which is, you use what's left at the end of the prior fiscal year to offset the future year budget. That's the way it needs to be done, that's good business. At the end of this year, assuming the 400 gets allocated correctly, we're, we're only going to carry over roughly $500,000, $600,000 in spent circuit breaker. So already for FY 19, we're tapping into unknown reimbursement, right? And so the idea that we should use more of a circuit breaker this year, you know, it's just, it's irresponsible, right? So we, I'm committed to providing a transparent budget, to budget responsibility, but we keep on being asked about this process to be irresponsible, and I'm, I'm not going to do it. Or I would recommend, I shouldn't have said that, but I would recommend we don't do it. So that, again, I read about the newspaper, but that, that is something I think I would, I think we need to say, our budget was built in a certain way and we need to stick by that, because that's, that's what transparency is all about, in, in responsibility. So just again, something to consider, but.
I think, yeah, perhaps it would be useful to have a kind of discussion around how circuit breaker works versus the stabilization fund and the timing of the monies coming in and out. Because I think that that's, it's the timing issue actually, that, that circuit breaker is a reimbursement. is a reimbursement. So you have to spend the money first, right?
I'm sorry, I was waiting for you.
But that circuit breaker is a reimbursement. So you have to commit to spending the money before you actually have a confirmation of what the circuit breaker reimbursement's going to be.
Some of it, certainly.
So that's why you need a cash cushion, right?
Well, just again, I mean, in an ideal world, just like the town does, we just went through a town meeting, they would never spend money that they don't know they have, right? Free cash, for example, right? When they're funding FY19, but they're looking back at FY18 to see what's kind of in the bank. That's what, that's what we should be doing with circuit breaker. That was what was done for many years here.
Exactly.
But we kind of got off track the last couple of years, trying to get back on track. So to me, that's a responsible way to do it.
Okay, great.
I just want to just say one thing in closing of this subject. It's, it's so distressing in the first year of a new superintendent's tenure in Duxbury that this type of conduct has existed between the town governance and the school committee, fighting for months and months and months over fractional percentages of our operating budget. I just can't believe this is in the best interests of our community and of our taxpayers and our town. I think there's some perhaps perceived sins of past administrators being rained down upon our new administration, but for whatever reason, this is way too complicated. It's way too adversarial, there's too much conflict over very small, in the context of what we need to do as a district. We gotta, we gotta get, we gotta move on, you know? And this, if this type of a relationship is going to exist between the governance of the town and our schools, we, we really have a fundamental problem that this is not what we want to be asking the leadership in our schools or the school committee to be devoting the majority of our time to. So I just want to say, it's just so discouraging. Here it is, May, the calendar is turned, and I'd say, since you started on July 1st, Dr. Antonucci, I apologize for the level of effort that we've made you go through to try and provide stabilized, transparent, and clear communication about school operations and school fundings, but you're hired to run the school district. So I think we just, as a community, we have to, we have to kind of get past this. But we're not off to a good start, and I really think this doesn't reflect well of our community, it's not in the best interest of our taxpayers, it's not in the best interests of our schools. We gotta find a way to move, move past this. So hopefully we can do that. I mean, we're not even through our first year with a new administration, but certainly wasn't what any of us intended for the first year. So anyhow.
Thank you, Peter. And I would say, you know, we did what was asked of us, right? We wanted more transparency, we gave more transparency, right? We wanted more efficiency, we gave more efficiency. We wanted budget tracking, we budget tracked. We've kind of hit up, hit all the, hit all the marks, and it feels a little like, you know, it's like a shenanigans, it's like the, the, you know, Sissoffist, you know, pushing it up the hill. Every time you think you're getting a little ahead, you know, you read about something in the paper, and it's, it's gone backwards, it's very, it's very disappointing. So hopefully, I agree with you. Certainly not for lack of chime or lack of desire to work collaboratively, but it's been a challenging couple of months.
I also want to chime in, some of the feedback from members of the community recently is, is the suggestion that maybe school committee could shut up a bit about the money and get on with curriculum and instruction and school development and stuff. And I think we would all like to do that, but you can't have curriculum development, you can't address, you know, large class sizes and stuff without having the money there. So the two things go hand in hand, and, and it would be ideal to get the, get back to a kind of more balanced functioning of the school committee. And so I look forward to that.
Agreed. Okay, can we have a motion to extend funds from the Special Education Stabilization Fund in the amount of $75,795.74?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on.
Okay, just a few quick things.
Ryan.
Yes. So the new scholarship, question in the pack, I think we just sent some notes, the name of the scholarship, the Ryan P. Schroeder Scholarship, information from the families in the packet, and I recommend approval, it's a very nice, generous offer.
And I love that it's a St. Michael's student, because my oldest child is a St. Michael's student. So they are very generous, and we are thankful for that. So can we get a motion to accept the scholarship for Ryan Schroeder?
I'm, I'm, I move that we accept the generous scholarship offer from Mr. and Mrs. Schroeder for the Ryan P. Schroeder Scholarship.
Do you have a second?
Second, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's something that wasn't on the agenda, but it's in your packet, but we sent, Christine sent a email out about the field trip.
To Spain.
The Spanish exchange trip, the next February, 2019.
Yep.
I apologize for, they, they, we just, if we can approve it, great, if not, we can always wait, but I do recommend approval, it's a, it's our exchange trip. I think this is the, what should I say, the fourth.
Yeah, they did it last year.
It's been a wonderful experience all around, and they would like to go again.
Great. They stay in host homes, and it's a great experience. So can we have a motion to approve the trip to Spain? Do you have the dates?
Yeah, Spanish exchange, February 16th to 26th, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and last is our school committee liaison appointments, and I know John gave us a kind of live document, but not everybody wrote on it, so here we go. Negotiations, I think Peter, you were interested in staying on that?
Sure, yeah.
And I will do that with you.
Okay.
Because next year is a negotiating year.
Is it, is it really?
Already.
Wow, that was fast.
Yes.
For the main DTA contract?
Mm-hmm.
Holy moly.
Three years?
Anyone want the experience? I've had the experience.
Does anyone else want, Matt?
Wait, is it really three years? That contract is already...
Can you read that?
I thought it was just...
Two.
I think, I don't know.
It was you and Ann.
Right.
So it must have been...
If, if you don't want to do it, Matt, do it.
Well, I was going to say, it was, I enjoyed the experience, but if someone else wants the experience, it's a great opportunity to meet the leaders and the faculty. It is a big-time commitment.
It is a time commitment.
So I'd be happy if someone wanted the experience. I'm happy to do it if no one else wants to, but Matt, if you're interested.
Matt, what do you think? You want it? Or are you just default?
I'm happy to do it, Peter, if you, if you bet too much on your plate, otherwise, if you want to continue the, the experience, then it's yours.
All yours, Matt, thank you.
All right, Matt, it's you and I. Okay, grievances. Peter, you going to stay on?
I'm happy to deal with that.
Okay, yeah. And then fiscal advisory and finance. Julie, you staying on that?
Yeah, I didn't have much connection with fiscal advisory or finance committee. You did most of that because as chairman, so...
Yeah, I'd say you should.
Do you want to stay up?
No, you should, I think, step up and take that, I think.
You sure? Okay, okay.
Okay.
I'm happy to do that.
Selectmen, Shannon is stepping up to the plate for that.
Nice.
See if you can do better than I did.
I've done it twice, and I haven't got nothing.
More time, you put in a lot of time.
Pilgrim Area Collaborative. That is open.
Do you want to still do that, or do you want to...
No, just so people know, it's the first Thursday of every month, they meet at 6:00 in Pembroke, just to have an idea of what the, and it's usually like 6 to 8.
Okay.
Well, they have a meeting tomorrow night, I'll do that one.
Okay.
Just to be honest with the time, you know it.
Matt, any interest in the pack?
Yeah, I'm not interested in that, if, if you need for, yeah.
Yeah, I think you win.
Okay.
Okay, the special ed, the CPAC, I think Shannon's going to roll off that, I'll take that.
Okay.
Annie Drew Dunham Scholarship, I love, so I'd like to stay with that.
Okay.
Which we should be doing soon. And then DEF, we were thinking that we probably don't need a liaison because they work with the assistant superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're going to take that off. School Health Advisory Council, we're going to take a, a break from that, and then if we need to have somebody appointed at some point in the future, we'll do that.
Okay.
Because right now, we're not. Okay. Suburban Coalition, I think Shannon.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there wasn't anything this last year for that, I haven't heard anything about it, so.
Yeah, I know Mary Lou used to go to meetings.
It required this year.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure why.
Okay. Peter, you going to stick with insurance?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Facts, Julia's going to roll off, Shannon's going to roll on. Matt, do you want to still be on facts, or do you want to roll off?
I'll roll off facts, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Government study?
That, um...
Is that done?
It's done.
Okay.
With town meeting, it's over.
Perfect. And then the district curriculum committee?
I'm off it.
I'll stay on it. I don't know if somebody else wants to go? Is anybody else interested in the curriculum?
Love to go, the timing of the meetings is tough.
I, I, I could do that, but I'd be going.
Okay, you and I can, because I can't, you know, that way we have coverage if we can't make all meetings.
And then there's the...
The town IT.
Town IT committee, which...
Oh, Julia.
I volunteered for it. I may not be the best person, so if somebody else would really rather do it, I'm happy.
Yeah, Matt, were you at all interested in that town IT committee?
Well, you know, it doesn't keep me up at night, but I can do it.
Why do I put you and Julia down, just so we have coverage for meetings?
Okay.
And then if we change it, we change it?
Okay.
But we've committed Julia right now.
All right.
Okay. Perfect.
Great.
All right, so where are we? Yeah, might help if I turn these over. Okay, any other comments from the public? Come on up, Patty.
Can you sit down, please?
Yeah, sure.
And tell us who you are.
Sure. So my name's Betsy Gillis, and I know nobody wants to talk about the sped stabilization fund anymore, but...
It's okay.
I do think, I'm in favor of renaming it, because if that's what you meant, no?
Well, it's a legal thing, so I don't know. We can't rename it, but...
Okay, so my, my point here is, I do think that there is perception among taxpayers and parents that the stabilization fund is in, it's in place to offset unexpected expenses in special education. So expenses that arise without being planned for. So if it's an in-and-out fund, and its only purpose is to fund tuitions, or I think that's what it was, then it might not be what people think it is. So if you are doing any work around potentially, you know, either better describing it or even renaming it, I guess I'm a fan for that.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, I'm sorry, I mean, just so, I mean, that's, you bring up a great point. Ideally, it is funded, that, that was why it was established, just in the, in the first year, it didn't quite work out that way. And probably the second year, it's not going to work out that way. And the long-term, it's exactly what it's supposed to be for, is unanticipated, so...
Okay, that's great. So if it remains to be that, that's great, because I think at least what, my experience is that it's unexpected. You know, there, from year to year, the special educator, education department doesn't really know what's coming until it's in front of them. We can do the best job possible budgeting for that, but if it's, and I also think that the perception, and I read all the articles in the Clipper, is that people think that sped is sort of a money drag off of the budget, the school budget, and that's also not accurate. And I think that clarifying this can be very helpful for, for people. I hope I made myself clear.
No, I'm, I'm actually glad you said that, because the, the instituting that fund was for unanticipated costs. And the students that we have now, we own and we know the costs, but we're not getting the operating funds for those students.
Right.
So that's why it is becoming in-and-out fund, because our operating budget was not appropriated to. So in the future, if we have students move into the district and we do have unanticipated costs, that's what the stabilization fund is, to stabilize the already funded operating budget.
Right.
So you hit the nail on the head.
As painful as that budgeting process was, and I watched it happen, it's just another area of potential improvement.
Sure.
And it will, I think it will balance some of the sentiment from the public, that, that it's all being done the right way. I also think behind the scenes, and I've said this to folks before, I think it's underfunded. I think that, I know it's underfunded, we didn't get level funding, and there are kids, I can speak in the special education area, that are going without, and so if there's, I, I just hope that that gets fixed as part of this, like, sort of grandiose budgeting correction, or budgeting process improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So then just for the correspondence, other comments, new issues for future meetings, it would, we're going to move the, your evaluation to June. Is there, does anybody have anything else for future correspondence or meetings, or? No, we're good? So we have Duxbury Police Department here, who have been extremely patient, listening to all of our school committee excitement, to give us an update on school security. So if you want to come on up, we have Chief Clancy and Deputy Chief McDonald and Officer Jamali.
Before you start, does anyone have a Bruin score?
Not good.
Oh.
What is it, chief?
It was three to one at the end of one, there was...
Plenty of time.
It'll have plenty of time. Not that I'm paying attention. Thanks for having us. I think it's been, you know, we've been, I'm sure probably you folks have been getting the occasional question, concern from parents and residents on what we're doing, particularly, you know, post Parkland, and obviously there was, you know, a flurry of activity post Sandy Hook. But I'm here to tell you that we didn't need those events to be taking the steps that we need to take. As your local police chief, I can tell you without question, my biggest fear, and I've been doing this 16 years now as a police chief in a local, in a small town, my biggest fear is to have an act of violence go down in one of our schools and us not have responded efficiently, effectively, and, you know, and were an effective response. And every time we see one of these events across the country, we're dialed in, we're analyzing. You know, truly, you pay me to lose sleep over this. We don't want our parents to lose sleep over this, we don't want you folks to worry about it, but we need to be partners in making the environment as safe as we can. And that means not just with advances and some security recommendations that we'll talk about in, in a few minutes, but also in policy and procedure. And, you know, as a, just as a quick snapshot, you know, I, I often get frustrated with the, it can't happen here mentality. Again, it's my job to worry about it, so I guess, I guess you can give me that frustration. But just this year alone, 2018, we're, we have 23 shootings, 18 weeks, 23 shootings in this country, and that is, that's where there's a firearm discharge, where someone has been either wounded or killed. You know, one and a quarter a week in this year. 25 folks have lost their lives and countless wounded. That's just in eight, the last 18 weeks. You know, for us, the main threat is this, that there's really two threats that we focus on when we're trying to do our preparing. And that's the internal threat, and an internal threat is an act by a student, an employee, a faculty member. And what can you do to minimize that? What we can do, training and equipment. And, you know, frankly, really our best defense for the internal threat is things that we're doing pretty well here. You know, we're mental health, first aid, awareness and training, which we do a great, a great bit of at, at the police department. But also the schools developing the threat assessment protocols, we've been... We've been working with the administration over the last couple, two, three years, in developing a sort of a consistency with that. I think you're doing a tremendous job there as well, because it's, it's in those threat assessments. The anonymous tips line, which I think is, is coming to a school district near you real soon, thanks to the superintendent, we're excited about that.
Yeah, we haven't, well, we haven't officially talked about this, but we, we've been talking for months, actually, about the idea of putting an anonymous tip line in place, and Chief and I, Jim, Deputy Chief, and that, and talking with the company, and it's a very affordable and efficient way, and we just think it's a great, a great tool. And so, we're in the process of talking to the company right now, and it's what it sounds like, it's a tip line.
You know, what we learned nationally, you know, we have those at the police department. You can, you can call on a tip, you can text, you can email a tip, but kids are more comfortable reaching out to the school if there is, if there is that availability. And what we've learned from these, particularly the internal threats, is there's always been emotional leakage. We always find out after the fact that kids heard, saw, knew. We want to make sure that we're giving the kids the awareness, the freedom to know that they can reach out and, you know, and let, let the school know, let the police know, and you know, and we'll take, we'll take a look into that, that situation. So, some, some really good things going on in that regard. The secondary threat, and that's the one that really concerns us, is that external threat. That's the unknown, completely unknown subject, that for whatever reason feels compelled to come to a, a school environment and, and create harm. Lately, the trend has been, it's an external threat, but the last two or three events, large events here in this country, have been former students. But that's an external threat, they're not in your system anymore, they're three or four years removed, and that's what we saw in Parkland, and that's, we've seen that a number of times over the last few years. But how do we deal with that external threat? Well, this is where we start to get into the security recommendations, and that's, you know, just basically target hiring. We need to do a reasonable job without turning our schools into a house of corrections. But there are certain things that we can do, a reasonable level of security that we can provide, that is going to delay, God forbid it happens, it's going to delay access or deny access to victims. There's a lot of different things that we can do, we've talked about those, some of those that we're working on right now, some of those that we're going to explain to you in a little bit when the deputy gets into that. But, you know, some of the other things that we can do with that, that external threat is the ALICE training, the, we call victim initiated mitigation. It's really the same thing, all those types of processes. We've done some training with faculty a few years back, and, and the doctor and I have been discussing advancing that as, as time allows. But, you know, I can tell you that when it comes to these, some of these building security features, that's out of my control. That's, there has to be a funding source, there has to be you folks on board to take a look at some of those things. So I have to focus on what's within my control, and this is what we do, preparedness. We have, for many years, have very detailed response plans for every building in this campus and for the Chandler. These are, these are the two books that are in every police card, and this outlines step by step how we're going to respond, what, how we're going in, when we're going in, what roads we're closing, where are your reunification centers going to be, where are we evacuating the kids to. We've done the work, I can do that, we've done that. I can advance the officers' training, we've done, for years, we've put a focus on the response to active shooter, and now the new focus, in addition to that, is this rescue task force concept, where we've sort of changed how we respond, we're, we're putting an emphasis on getting folks that are wounded out a lot sooner, trying to save lives. I can provide my people with the, the right safety equipment. Over the course of the last few years, we've bought those kinds of things. Sure, the, the cop on the street wears a typical duty vest, but we've expended the time, the resources, and the money to come up with. Each cruiser has a tactical vest, and each cruiser has a Kevlar tactical helmet, God forbid. My people aren't running in there to face a threat that's with a, in this day and age, typically a high-powered rifle. We want to be able to provide them some level of safety. I've done that for my people. The right firearms, we've done that with our folks. The advanced first aid, you talked about the stop the bleed. We started doing this three or four years ago, where we've advanced our, our first aid training for our officers, where now, it's the critical combat care, it's the, the hemorrhage control. We're now training in carrying equipment with quick clot tourniquets, we're doing all those things, we've never done those before. You know, some folks, well, geez, you know, over the top, well, no, it's not, because very transferable. God forbid we have those kids that get, that hit that pole at four o'clock in the morning, and they are in a tough condition with a bleed, you know, we're going to apply that. We're in a better, we're in better shape now to respond and to assist those kids. Continuing drills, the lockdown drills, not just here at the school, but the training that we do, we're reviewing our training plans on our annual training, in-house training program, we're doing tabletop exercises, we're continually reviewing the plan, we just did it again the other day, we had the fire command staff in, and we reviewed the, particularly the high school response plan. That's what I can control, that's what I'm doing. Engaging regionally, over the course of the last two or three years, myself and the deputy, we've been involved in some statewide task force, we've been working on coming up with some standard response protocols of response to these types of things. We're engaged there, we're participating there. But really, most importantly, is just learning and adapting. You know, the deputy's office is a couple offices over, and, you know, we talk about that, this year, one and a quarter events a week. Well, we're constantly monitoring that, and it, it's become a very tragic occurrence, where it's, I'll yell to Steve, hey, did you see Texas? Because we get the alerts. And he's, I'm pulling up now, right from the get-go, we're starting to follow what's going on there. And then in the days of follow, we're getting as much information as we can, and we're looking at what we're doing, and we're trying to, we're modifying as necessary. Parkland was one of the events that we made a policy change. We, you know, it took us two or three days to get enough information to see that we saw a hole, and it was more of where, where our policy really wasn't very specific, and giving the officers instruction at the immediacy of the event, well, we took care of that, it's no longer vague. So, those are the things that we can do, and what I can do also is just advocate. Advocate for, you know, we're, we're very interested in, from a state building code perspective, getting some of these safety features as a code for new school buildings. We've got a tremendous emphasis on fire safety, I commend the fire services for doing a tremendous job. We haven't lost a student in a school fire since nineteen fifty-eight in this country, but we're losing how many kids each week to acts of violence in schools? We've got to start taking that seriously. So, we're engaged there. I can do that, we can advocate for that. We can also advocate for the advancements on the mental health protocols, we can advocate for improved gun laws, all those kinds of things. That's what we're doing, and now we want to show you some of the things that, that we'd like for you folks to consider. These are the things that are within your control. I would say, I'm going to turn over the deputy real quick, but I just want to say that just in the last, just in the last year, I would say that we've got some pretty good momentum. Dr. Antonucci and I have been working closely, I think this is the, we co-sponsored a light capital project this year, that never happened before. And it was a safe, it was a safety program, a safety feature, that we're excited that's, we're going to be taken care of. But, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we're happy, absolutely happy with the environment in this administration, and we're really thinking that we're going to be able to move some of our initiatives forward, and we're cognizant that there is a balance here, and there is, you know, we, we listen to your plight, with the budget, we get that, we feel that pain, but we're also very eager to work with you to find alternative funding sources, grant programs and the like. So, that's my quick editorial with that. I'm going to turn it over to the deputy, and we're going to go as quickly as we can with this presentation.
Chief, we're going to, we're planning to go into executive session, is this the time to...
Do you want to do that now?
Sure. So, we should adjourn to executive session, I'm realizing that I'm going to think about the projection now, we're actually probably going to go across the hall, if that's okay, just because they need to wrap, they need to break down the room, so we'll have to figure out the projection. So, do you mind if I...
Motion.
You want to...
The school committee will be going into executive session to discuss issues related to school and security, which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if the discussion were in open session. The board will not return to open session tonight. So can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Being adjourned. Okay. You going to carry Matt to executive session?
Carry him.
Yeah, I think we do.
Go into executive session?
Yes.
I roll call.
Okay. Can we take a roll call vote to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session.
Second.